All right, I would call the meeting to order for the budget hearing. And clock on the wall is a little fast. I go by cell time because that gives everybody the same time coming in. So Lori will take attendance while we're here and I'm going to turn over to Mr. Milky right away.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and attention this evening for the budget hearing for 25-26 school year. I'm excited to be presenting this proposed budget to you. Before I get going, I wanted to thank Mary Blaha and Ken Michler for their time last year working for the school district, starting the process of creating a proposed preliminary budget that you guys, that was brought to the subcommittee or the committee in July 1st. And then their help with me as I transitioned into this role, starting on July 1 and the help they did in helping me make revisions, looking at the data, helping make our projections as precise as possible. And one of the points that I really want to drive home is that these are projections. Nothing is set in stone. Tomorrow, things are going to change a little bit. Things are going to be a little bit more set in stone. So there's a lot going on in October for school finance. So today, we're, we're, we're going to have this budget, we're having this budget hearing. Tomorrow, the state is going to send us a spreadsheet, the biggest spreadsheet for me and my colleagues in other districts of the year, where the state lets us know what our equalized aid is going to be, which helps, which also helps us figure out what our levy is going to be. They're going to tell us what our revenue limit is and things can become more concrete. Right now, we, we're, we go with a proposed budget with the best information that we have right now. I just want to focus on some highlights and then we'll just sort of, we'll talk through, talk through the budget page by page that you have in front of you printed out. Even though I was a technology director once, I like printouts as well when it comes, comes to facts and figures.
Some of us are old.
So the, the rightsizing the district did with staffing is the direct, you know, the, the direct reason why our expenditures are decreasing in Fund 10. So Fund 10 pays for the vast majority of, of all of our, all of our bills, of all of our people. So the rightsizing done with staffing helped to bring down salaries and employee benefits. That was something that the district did in order, as part of the process of going out to referendum to borrow $25 million to start our work on facilities. So that's, that, that is, that's the highlight from Fund 10. So in order to meet needs, so this is something that's, that's data driven. You know, we have more, we have a higher percentage of students in our population that have special education needs. So what we're, what we're doing is we, we have to move money from Fund 10 over to Fund 27. So 10, that's the general fund, 27, that's special education. So we do a transfer over to fund our special, our special education program. So we're going to be doing, we're going to be transferring more than we did last year to help meet the needs that we have in our student population. One of the, or the top, not one of the, the top thing that came out for school finance officials in the latest budget from the state is that special ed reimbursement is going up. We're estimating it to be up to $5.1 million. We'll go over and when we go, go through the pages, the, the changes, what it was from, from last year. And we have a report that's due on Friday that we're ready to go on that tells, that, that helps communicate our special ed expenditures over to the state because that's the, that is the, that's the key number that they use to figure out what, what they're going to send us for aid to offset special education costs. So they'll take that and, you know, the, the state said that they're going to reimburse 42%. It's probably going to be closer to 39, 40% when everything's said and done. And the last point before we go through the, go through the sheets, the district has debt now. So we now have Fund 39 debt. That's going to be one of two pieces now that we use to put together to, to, to create our total levy. So the last few years, the total levy has just been Fund 10. Now it's going to be Fund 10 plus Fund 39. So that will make up our levy for now, for the next several, you know, years now that we have debt. So I would ask you to move back over, take a look at the printout. And there's printouts that are available for the folks in the audience as well at the table. Start with, with Fund 10. So you can, we have the, you know, the preliminary budget or our current or proposed budget. And the first column, unaudited 24-25. So we're still, we're, we'll get, we'll get our report back from the auditors around Thanksgiving time or so, and then we'll, we'll have audited budget numbers from, from last year. The change in the percentage change. You can see right at the top, just like in the first bullet point from the, the slide that was just up, expenditures for salaries, employee benefits for Fund 10 dropped. And dropped pretty significantly. And that's, you know, when you, when you reduce FTE and when you look at like budget as a whole, you look at salaries and benefits. That's, you know, that's well over 70%. Well, you know, 70, 75% of our budget. So that's, you know, when, when something changes there, that has a big impact on everything else. The item on page two, at the start of page two in Fund 10, I want to focus on, there's just a little, there's a couple asterisks. Note fund balance deficit due to commitment to the baseball field project. So last year, the, the board approved using $900,000 of fund balance. So fund balance, think of that as that saving, savings account for the school district. Helps us get us through months where, where aid money or tax money isn't coming in. Helps us with our credit rating with Moody's when we go out to borrow. So we're going to be taking, using $900,000 of the fund balance to, to help pay for the baseball field. Last year, so if you go over one, one column, you can see that the, the district underspent by $1.1 million and was able to put that money towards the, towards the Fund 10 fund balance. You know, the, the last slide in the, in the, in the presentation tonight talks about, you know, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more in depth about fund balance, why it's important, why it's something that we need to, need to keep our eye on collectively for the good of the district. So, so yeah, so that, you know, that is balanced other than the commitment made for the baseball field. So Fund 10, 81,000 or 81,415,757 dollars in expenditures and revenue. We move to Fund 21. When we look at Fund 21, you know, that is, you know, money's coming in, money's coming out for that. You know, for, for activities, for clubs, for all the, all the, the, the things that, that, you know, kids and families are doing fundraisers for, money's coming in, you know, for something like prom or something like that. That's where that money's going, it's coming in and it's going out to pay, pay for things that the, those kinds of activities are doing. So we're, we're estimating, you know, it's going to be around $300,000 of money coming in and money coming out. That's, you know, that's all local money. So it's coming in from, from our, from fundraisers, from fees like that. And it's going back out and getting, getting spent on, on things that continue on around the district. Fund 27 for special education fund. Of the three things. So one of the things that's, that's coming back in the, that's coming in the, in the board meeting, the, the regular board meeting today is some more, some more, some additional staffing for special education. So we put more money towards salaries, towards employee benefits. And one of the things that, that, that you have to grapple with when you're trying to find people to fill positions that are hard to fill, you might not be able to find somebody. So then you need that third, that third item there that I have highlighted, purchase services. So you might have to go out to a CISA, CISA 7 or a different nonprofit or a for-profit company to get some of the services that we need for our students. So those are the big, you know, those are some big increases that we have in expenditures for special education and then operating transfer in, we're increasing that. And then we're expecting, last year, we got just a bit under 3.6 million from the state for our special ed reimbursement. We're projecting it to be about $5.1 million. Yeah.
What was the, what was the, the past year's current state reimbursement for special ed, 33%, 34%? 29 probably. So then we're expected to go, you anticipate tomorrow, the state's going to say we're at 39%?
39% is what we're.
So that would be an increase back to us of about $5.1 million?
Not an increase of 5.1, but an increase of like $1.5 million. So we went from like 3.572 million to five, projected 5.126 million dollars. So an extra one and a half million of both coming back to the district to reimburse for special education expenditures. Yeah, so that's a big thing. That's, you know, it's.
So when that money comes back in, it comes back into Fund 27, doesn't go back in, doesn't go back into Fund 10 that gets borrowed over to Fund 27, goes right into 27.
Fund 27 always has to be zero. Always, always, always has to be zero. It can't, you can't carry that money over. You always have to have a zero fund balance. The auditors check that, the state checks that.
So there's no carryover anymore?
No, not, not in Fund 27 though. So. So zeros when it comes to fund balance for Fund 27. Okay, so debt, Fund 38 and Fund 39. So Fund 38 would be if you have debt that the district went out and got without going to referendum. District that was in about 15 years ago was in a position where they could do that. They had enough, enough money that they didn't, they didn't need to go out to referendum. So they, they had Fund 38 debt. We don't, we don't have that. We have Fund 39 debt. So we went out to referendum, made the pitch for $25 million to help to start, start working on our buildings. And so now we have that money. So the 20, the payment that we have to levy for, so this is one part of the levy. So the Fund 38 part of the levy is $776,000 and change. That's, Baird lets us know what's, you know, what our payments are going to be. So we, we'll set that. So every year when we have this budget hearing, that will be part of what we talk about during the budget hearing. And that will also be something that we talk about when we set the levy. Fund 38 will now, is now a part of our finances from, for, for now, till for several decades. So it's going to be part of, part of, part of what our, our, our finances look like. Okay, so now we have that, you know, the $25 million. We, we don't have all 25 million yet. We have 14 of it. We're going to issue debt on April 1st for another $11 million and then it goes into here, capital projects. So Fund 46 and Fund 49. So as that money comes in to pay for things, it's going to go in from the, from, from the referendum debt. It's going to go into Fund 49. Think of Fund 49 as you're checking it out. Something's, you know, the money go, the, the money comes in when we need it. The, our, our investment, the investment company that we're working with releases it to us when we need to pay bills. So it's going to go into Fund 49 and then we'll pay for that, you know, pay for the, you know, the roof on Lincoln. Pay for those projects as they get, as, as they're done. Fund 46, that's a long-term like savings account. Ken started that like in 2015 or something like that. So we've had it for a long time. So we can freely use Fund 46. One of the interesting little sort of things to note about Fund 46 is that once money gets transferred into Fund 46, it immediately becomes an expenditure. So if you leave something in Fund 10, Fun 10's fund balance, it's not an expenditure. It stays a revenue because it hasn't, hasn't been paid yet or hasn't, hasn't been spent yet. But once it goes into Fund 46, you're committing that to your buildings. And based on how the, how the state looks at our finances, that they see that as an expenditure, which, you know, things are, something's put into Fund 46 that helps us out with our equalization aid the next year. Because the next year, it looks like, you know, we had more expenses even though we hadn't necessarily paid for anything yet. But it would help us out with our equalization aid. So that's going to, that's Fund 46 and Fund 49. That's what we'll be doing to fix up our facilities around the district. Fund 50. I'll just jump to sort of the, you know, the, the, the part that I think pops when, whenever I show this to somebody. We look, you know, we, you go to the bottom with the, with the fund balance. So we have a positive fund balance from funds from prior years. But the past year, you know, the, the, the food program lost almost three, or almost lost a quarter of a million dollars. We're projecting about a $200,000 loss for the coming year. Please remember, we feed everybody that comes to us. You know, one of the, the, the ways to work towards getting that as small as possible is just increasing participation. The more kids come, the more kids get stuff, the more the reimbursement is going to come back from, from the federal, from, from the federal government, from DPI. So, so that's something for us to be mindful of and continue to work. We have a long, we have a long relationship with Chartwells. They know this is something that, that they, that, that we, we collectively need to work on. So that is a number that, that jumps, but something that's, that's on our radar and something that we're going to work on as best, you know, to, to try to get more kids to, to take advantage of that. I don't have it, I'm not going to, I don't have an answer on like how to, how we can best address that tonight. But it's something that's, that's on our minds.
Perhaps more to the superintendent, is there, is there a plan or has things been discussed with Chartwells to try to get some participation up and get?
Yeah, if you'll remember back, pretty recently, we began two pilot programs for afternoon meals at Jefferson and Washington. And we were going to let that get rolling and then do a report to the Finance and Facilities Committee as to how that's operating so far. One of the reasons we did that, not only to help, you know, make sure our kids have the nutrition they need to learn best. The other was that the reimbursement rates for those meals were higher in proportionality than the others. So the reimbursement rates for those afternoon meals is essentially a strategy to do just what we're talking about. So one of the things we want to do is to try to determine whether or not that strategy should be applied district-wide if it is having a positive impact on that overall bottom line. So those will be things we have to think about and start discussing here as we move in after the first quarter of the year. When we have some firm numbers on really how those are going.
Okay. Got anything else or?
Um, go to the, just the slideshow to go over a couple of things. Okay?
Couple of questions on 10 or just comments, I guess. Taking a look at the tax levy that jumped out to be 0.3%. We're holding ourselves fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. Wanted to point that out. And also again, that insurance and judgment that increases that as, as we do things like replace boilers, upgrade using our capital funds, just to think about that a little bit.
Absolutely. And, and even Monica, who's our, our rep from M3, she'd said, as soon as stuff gets done, let us know. You know, let us know that, that, that those things are happening and then we can start looking at resharpening the pencils over, you know, our property insurance. All right. Um, just before I get into a couple of these slides, and I, I did make some changes compared to like what was posted. Just so you know, I, when I put a tilde in front of something, it's an approximate number, it's a projection. Okay. Just, so I just didn't want to like have it out there and not define what that is. Because I certainly realize that not everybody's, you know, is inside of my head and understands what's going on in it. So, so yeah, so if you see that tilde, you know, that's, we're, we're talking about approximate numbers. So this is just a, a, a little bit of a look back in terms of what our aids looked like, what the levy has looked like over the years. So, you know, our state, you know, we expect our state aid to go down with fewer kids. We expect our state aid to go down. We have an allowable levy and then we have what we're going to levy. Okay? You know, we are looking at right now about a $3 million under levy. This is to make good on the promises made when the referendum was up last spring. Okay, we, what we're looking at is about a 3% increase to get inflation back for the district. But other, you know, other than that, we're, you know, we're, we're taking, we're, we're holding, holding tight on that. The 3% increase. Like I said, in the past, we didn't do any Fund 39, now we have Fund 39. So this is what we're looking at for a total potential of a positive levy. Next Wednesday, when we meet, that'll be something that we, we talk about and then we set for this coming school year. In another slide, we'll talk, we'll look, look ahead. We, we still have this, we have an operational referendum, has two more years on it after this. Started out at nine and a half, this year it's at 13 million. You know, so like when you take a look at, you know, the operational referendum, we're leaving 3 million of that on the sidelines, even though it was approved by, by taxpayers. That's something that we're, we're, we're leaving off because we know, you know, there's, there's a lot of work to be done in terms of working on our buildings. This is what, you know, what it's going to, what, what it's looked like the last couple of years. The total levy percentage changed. So we had a 37% raise, a 13% raise. And then this year, we'll have a 3% raise to the total levy. Just something to call out in terms of what, what the levy is made up of, other than, you know, its operations, its debt. One of the other spot parts of it, 18.9% of our levy is used for vouchers and vouchers, vouchers for students, vouchers in this, in this special ed program, voucher exemption program as well. So when you look at a breakdown, 78.5% of, of the levy is going towards district operations. 18.9 is going towards vouchers and 2.6% is going towards our debt. Mill rates are changing. So, you know, it's just, it's still all just, it's, it, you know, some of these things seem complex, but it's just algebra. Equalized value divided by total levy times 1,000. So our equalized values have gone up. So because our equalized values are going up from a little over 4 billion to 4.5 billion. And we're holding the line on the levy. Our mill rate is taking a pretty big dip from 7.05 to 7, 6.55. So, you know, these are the two big, you know, some, some, you know, obviously the levy is what, you know, what the money we're asking for. But mill rate's something that people ask for because that's how you compare yourself to your tax rate to, to districts around, around you. So what, what happened if we didn't under levy? So if we didn't under levy, there'd be, you know, a better than 13% increase in the levy. Our mill rate would be going up in this situation with a 3% levy. This is where we're at with our, with our mill rate that, you know, expecting it to be about $6.55. So our operational referendum, we have not hit the top of it yet, so it keeps going up. So we'll have 13 million, we have 13 million this year, three of which we're not taking. And then 15 and then 17 and a half. I don't have answers about what we're going to do in the future. I can only talk about what we're doing today for the 25-26 school year. But that's something that we'll discuss in the coming years about how, how we're going to, how we're going to manage that, the, the money that's coming in over the next couple of years for the operational referendum.
The interest that we, the interest that the district earns off that, that referendum dollars that we don't spend or whatever as you progress there, that then comes back to the district in Fund 46 that the district can then use again on other building projects. Is that correct?
Yeah, or you just put it in Fund 49, one of the, wherever. Yeah, yeah. When that money comes in, yeah, that will just go towards other, other projects that we need to do. Last item. So fund balance, you know, we're, we're in a good spot. Credit rating agencies like to see closer to 30% of revenues. I, I assume at some point in time in the next couple of years, we're going to be looking to borrow some more money to address more of our, more of our facilities issues. So the, the higher our fund balance for, in Fund 10 can be closer to 30%, the better off we're going to be in terms of like what the credit rating is that Moody's or whoever we go with is going to give us for a credit rating. So that'll help with interest. So it's, it's, you know, right now, you know, in terms of managing the district, being able to not have to short-term borrow, we're in a good spot with that. I'm just talking about it from just sort of a longer-term philosophical perspective that we need to, you know, it's something we need to keep an eye on in terms of, you know, how our financial portfolio looks to credit rating agencies. So, so fund balance, we'll talk about that again down the road. But it's one of the things I just wanted to, to touch on before we were done today. So that is my presentation.
Any questions from the board?
My question is, I've been reading about cuts for special education money.
My question is, I've been reading about cuts for special education money from the federal government. How will that affect us?
I mean, I think we, we just have to wait and see. I mean, you know, we thought no title dollars in July were coming and then they came. So I, I think just waiting to see what happens in the long, in the long run. You know, we'll, we'll see what happens. But I think reacting quickly to news is probably isn't a good, a good way to, to handle this. These sort of things that like, is it coming, is it not coming? Wait and see.
All right, at this time, the board has no other questions. If anybody has a question just on the budget issue.
Not making any opinions or saying anything if you have any questions on the process that, that Nate went through. And this is your first time, you did a nice job tonight, appreciate that. But if anybody's sitting here would like to ask a question, I will accept that at this time. As long as you keep it to a budget question and don't get into a speech. All right. You have another question?
No, I've never had a question. I can't do a speech, I gotta just ask a question?
Good luck with the state, I hope it comes.
I do want to note that, uh, as I looked at the salaries here, um, it was a one plus, one plus million dollar savings in salaries. And we didn't close a school. So that was a nice job by the administration staff here to go through, find out where we were maybe overstaffed and, and different things. Came up with a million dollars in savings, so that's a good thing for us.
All right. So we did go up on insurance and judgment, what does, what does judgment mean?
Oh, I mean, it just, I, I, that's just where we, we pay for insurance or if there's any relief or anything like that.
So is that health insurance or is that health?
No, no, health, health insurance is under benefits.
Okay, okay, okay.
I make a motion, we close out of course, uh, public.
May I adjourn a second? For Carrie, all those in favor say aye. Post say nay. And we are adjourned from the public hearing, thanks Nate. And at this time, I will call the, uh, regular board meeting to order. And I welcome to the, turn to the boardroom, these fourth graders from Madison Elementary School who are going to lead us in pledge tonight. Thank you, Madison fourth grade.
Yeah.
And I will turn it over to Lori for roll, for roll call.
Christopher Abel.
Here.
David Bowman.
Here.
Viv Hansen.
Here.
Ann Holson.
Here.
Mary Lofe Blonik.
Present.
Esha.
Here.
Gary Trask.
Thanks Lori, and I will open it up to public input. We have one person requesting that tonight, Barb, come on up.
My name is Barbara Post, I live at 85 Wilson Street, Manitowoc. I've been here before, tonight I want to talk about all the changes taking place. There's still questions about true inclusion and NVCI, how it goes hand in hand together with true inclusion. What, with all the changes taking place, there are still questions. Like why does the subject of true inclusion get tossed around without definition? We've been doing the same thing forever, but what is the definition of true inclusion in the 2025, 26 Manitowoc School District? How is it implemented here? And why is it so important that all schools are on the same page and are given, the students are given the same opportunities in their homeschools, active participation by school-led teams? Another partner to true inclusion is NVCI, nonviolent cross-crisis intervention. This is not a new concept or protocol for MPSD. It has been here a long time, but not fully implemented, thought to be only for certain students and staff. It is soft skills apparent, it takes care of everything that's in order, lacking in soft skills across the board. As an educator, one must realize how truly important this one inclusive ranging protocol is for the district. It reaches beyond the school place. It extends into the community. NVCI does require time, patience, perseverance, communication and collaboration from all staff to give true full inclusion any chance of success. It's a total perspective change. To work, it has to be a complete staff buy-in and all-day, everyday working place mindset concept. You have all been trained, as I was told, so make it your top priority. The first tool used in your daily work routine, practice makes it a habit. This tool is imminent in teaching in a nurturing, empathetic approach to compliance. It is everyone's responsibility to care for the welfare, safety and security of all. Through this training and use of it, awareness becomes top priority to getting a situation under control or maybe alleviating it altogether. That's what a highly intuitive NVCI-trained staff team does every day. Always looking for positive ways to make life better for all. Positive, interactive role modeling produces positive self-reliance, responsible, problem-solving students. They have the knowledge and the ability to make this positive, good choices in their approach to life. By following this protocol every day, all day, it gives oneself assurance of doing all that you can do to make a positive impact. Communicate, collaborate, take tech out of the picture, human interaction is our top priority. You have the ability to do your job, not wait for someone else to do it. Ask questions, get more info, reread the practice, stay alert and be ready to follow the protocol. You have had training, believe in yourself, not sure, check with your team. We are living in a tech global world, but human behavior of MPS staff and students should always be your number one priority. How many of you have had the CSU 7 Intense 3-Day Training? It is very intimidating to be working, I went there, I have worked with strangers. It is very intimidating to have someone take you down and you realize how someone feels when your personal space is invaded. To have one's personal space invaded or compromised breaks one's trust in that person. Facing fear is an ongoing human battle needed to work through to alleviate it. Stay cool, calm and collected, safety always is your number one priority. How are you impacting others? You, one must interact positively and face your fear. View students all the same with different modifications to accomplish the tasks they are given. We are all in this life journey together. Sincere, positive human interaction is our most important task. And our greatest gift besides just getting people something is the gift that we extend human interaction. It's positive to each other's. It leads to a broad acceptance when we can understand that we are all different and we all have differing emotions and views and still able to work, accomplish and thrive together toward a common goal. When I worked, when I went to this, they gave you this aid and if you just look at it, it's four steps, not very long. It's the most impressive thing and I don't know who, if you guys are all have had this training or not. Because I worked with it for 16 years, I was with the kids that no one wanted to work with and I always got through to them. This is a very important tool and I think if everybody's trained, they need to be able to, be able to work with any child given to them in a day. Thank you so much for listening and I hope, I'm hoping, because you told me that everybody was trained. We should not, this came from last month, there should not be 100 or 59 to 100 in fractions yet. You're supposed to be at zero, thank you.
Thanks Barb. I have no other forms for public input, I will close public input at this time and turn it over to the consent agenda. If you check your consent agenda, is there anything anybody would like pulled from that for discussion? Anything anybody would like pulled?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah, from D, number two, which is policy 01445.5.
Does anybody have anything else? Okay, let's do this, can we, hang on one second, can we approve the other ones? Then we'll come back and discuss this, do I have a motion to approve the items that were not pulled? And with the motion, Chris with the second, any other discussion on that? During, say none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Who say nay? And now we have the, um, pulled item.
What was the number please? That was 0144.5, Board Member Behavior, Communications and Code of Conduct. And a partridge in a pear tree.
Board Member Behavior, yeah. Okay. And speak to the issue, Chris.
Yeah, um, thank you and thank you, everybody, for allowing me to address this. I have a real, we've had this basic policy for quite some time. My concern here is the change to, um, in the second paragraph where should be avoided becomes are prohibited. Okay, and the reason that concerns me is because ultimately the deciders of appropriate behavior for board members is the electorate. There's, uh, so I think it was best, as it was written before, should be avoided rather than are prohibited. Because the only people with the power to prohibit them are the voters. The board can censure members, but the board cannot prohibit behavior of any given member. If the behavior is illegal, obviously it can be stopped. But other behavior that we disapprove of, we can't prohibit, we can simply censure and the person can then turn around and engage in it again. So that's, that's my concern. I, I would move that we return the language to should be avoided from are prohibited.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second discussion on it.
I, I sort of took my discussion already, I apologize, but thank you.
It's okay, it's okay.
Chris, could you please repeat that, remove and return the language?
Remove are prohibited from the end of the second paragraph and re, and return to should be avoided.
Yeah, restore the, the old, the old wording. I, I, yeah, I, I just find this, this paragraph, you know, pretty subjective. And, you know, to, um, what does compromise the reputation, what constitutes that? I mean, honestly, if that isn't subjective, I don't know what is. Maybe, maybe less so on legal position of the district. But, um, I do, I do think there's, there's a lot of judgment call in that one. So I would, I would, I would rather have prohibited than, you know, I'd rather not have prohibited, I'd rather have avoided. Since there's so much play in this, in this whole, this whole clause.
I would understand that. My concern however, is for the legal part of that. That if somebody says something that can bring legal consequences to the Board of Education, that concerns me. And I agree that, um, yeah, I, I agree with what you just said, Carrie. But my, my concern is if one of us says something and that brings legal consequences to this board or the district and we let that happen, I'm not sure that's a good thing. I'm not sure how legally an attorney would look at that. You know, if I said something that, that brought a lawsuit against the public school district. And we don't have any protection saying, I can't do that in our policies. But there's nothing in our policies that says, well, he can't say that.
But what if it's inadvertent? I mean, I mean, certainly, you know, people, we've had people fly off.
Right.
Et cetera, et cetera, and, um, I think I, I certainly, I certainly agree with, nobody should deliberately, you know, take action or use speech that compromises the board's legal, legal interests. One could argue about whatever the interest is, I suppose, but, um, yeah.
And? We made two additions on that sentence. And if we would take one or the other off, it might be, what about taking the reputational off? Because it seemed, it appears as though we're most concerned with the legal position, right? Want to make sure we're upholding our legal requirements as board, board members. If we take that off and make that strictly prohibited, would that work?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a good idea.
I think when you take a look at that whole, that entire sentence, conduct by board members that compromise the reputation or legal position of the district should be avoided, lots of things should be avoided. But I think the specificity of, of the district compromises the reputation or legal position of the district are prohibited is much more definitive. I think that, that should be avoided is, is nice. There's a lot of things in this policy that should be avoided, but I think the specificity of are prohibited is a little bit clearer to understand in my, my speaking.
I feel this paragraph speaks to the leadership of the board, the first part of the paragraph. And as, as we work toward that culture of excellence and professionalism, I think the board needs to be leaders on that. And I would support to leave it as, as proposed.
Other discussion? We have a motion to change it.
Yeah. We want to amend the motion.
And the motion to remove the, we're, sorry.
I'm going to amend it just to remove the reputation.
Or do you want to have it stand in separate?
Amendment motion.
Only if we're keeping prohibitive, if they are prohibited.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. I don't know.
So what are we thinking?
Call the question.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
And to be clear, this is the original motion, which is to change back to should be avoided from are prohibited.
Okay, so if you are voting yes, you want it changed back to the original, if you're voting no, you want it to, you want to leave it as it has been changed. All right? All those in favor of changing it, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of leaving it?
Yes, I'm confused then. State the motion again.
The motion was to strike are prohibited, which is in green right now, and return to should be avoided.
Okay, okay. So, all those in favor of the change, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie and Chris. All those opposed, say nay.
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 So the motion fails. Okay. Um, then do we have to vote to approve the new one? Or is it, is it approved?
No, it's the old one.
We'll approve.
Vote to approve. Do I have a second to approve it? And I have a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And it passes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Student representative.
Ooh. Okay. So I'll just introduce myself again. My name is Lulu Winboom. I'm a junior at Manitowoc Lincoln. And my job basically is to provide like a student perspective of what is going on within our school's community. Now, I have three topics I'd like to inform you guys on. One being sports, one being homecoming week, and one being student exploration. I'll start with sports. Our football team continued an unfortunate loss streak, going zero and seven so far until their homecoming game. I'll get into that later. Boys soccer has had a seven to twelve record so far at a thirty-six percent win rate. It's okay. Cross country has had quite a lot of meets this past month with member Natalie Portman achieving a new school record of eighteen fifty, with other members such as Lucas Gallagos and Nora Free meddling in multiple races. Now moving into girls' sports, girls volleyball has had a fifty-one percent win rate, with junior Abby Weedmeyer having achieved one thousand kills. I don't really know what that means, but. Okay. Girls golf is moving to the end of their season with member Briella Reeves moving on to sectionals after making second team for all conference. If you don't know, girls golf is a new sport at Lincoln this year. The girls tennis number one doubles team of Jordan Pop and Taylor Peterson won sectionals and will be heading to state. I believe they both won last year, but weren't competing together. All right. Now moving into homecoming week. On Monday, the student senate hosted a hallway decorating competition between classes, with each grade working hard to make their hallway theme stand out. The creativity and teamwork really showed how much everyone cared about making homecoming week special. And I know what you're thinking, who were the winners? Take a wild guess, the seniors and could have been the juniors, we're pretty good. On Wednesday, the homecoming bonfire was an exciting way to celebrate homecoming. Students gathered around the fire, enjoying music, cheering, and spending time with friends. I think the event brought everyone together and created a strong sense of school spirit and unity. On Friday, we celebrated homecoming with a school-wide pep rally, with entertainment from student senate, the marching band, dance team, and the cheer team. And later that night, the homecoming parade occurred with multiple floats from different school activities and clubs. Shortly after was the powder puff game at Ron Rubik coached from volunteers from the football team. All right. And then on Saturday, the homecoming game was very exciting as we saw our first win from the ships this season against Green Bay East going twenty to twelve. And then later that night, we had our homecoming dance with Sarah Bolchenes Prom Queen and Brett Danielson awarded Prom King. Now moving into student exploration. Juniors attended a career college fair at Lakeland University. I was there. Pretty informational, lot of schools, but it was, it was okay. On top of that, we've also had a couple of guest speakers come to Lincoln, one from real estate and the other from an EMT program.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a note on homecoming, I got out of my car as I was walking to the game. The band sounded terrific.
Yeah.
They really, they were really good. It almost sounded like Wisconsin. I mean, it was, it was huge and it was a big sound, so I was very proud and congratulations. It was good. All right, report of the superintendent, Mr. Tennis.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Hanson. Very excited this evening to bring light to a very special young man who has achieved some academic greatness. And in order to recognize him, I'd like to invite Mr. Michael Hoffman, Principal of Lincoln High School, to come up and introduce our special guest and celebrity on this. And I also, when we're prepared, I have a certificate to present as well.
Awesome. So in our, in our audience today, we have Torstilheimer, who is, has been recognized as a national merit semifinalist. For those, just a quick explanation of kind of what that means. As students submit their ACT scores and SAT scores and so on and so forth, as they grow closer to graduation, the National Merit Corporation takes that information, looks at a variety of things, and then reaches out to students. Tor is one of sixteen thousand, which sounds like, holy cow, that's a lot. However, there are fifteen point one million high school students in the country. So if you do that math, I did a while back when I was presenting to you in the band room tour, it was like, it's, it's a tenth, let's say it was like, tenth of a, of a pers- of a percent of the high school population in the country. So what we had to do is we compiled a variety of information about the school and about Tor and sent that off to the corporation. Tor wrote an essay and did some information on, on his own. Once that's submitted, then the corporation takes some time and they whittle that list down to nine thousand national merit finalists, which we're of course hoping that Tor makes his way toward. I asked a variety of teachers to tell me about Tor as a person, as a student. And a few themes came up. Obviously academically, like extending himself on a regular basis. They did say that Tor sometimes was a little quiet. However, with that quiet resiliency comes great leadership. Variety of years, teachers said that Tor is, it can be a little on the quiet side. The students really look up to him. And when placed in positions of leadership, they gravitate towards his example and they gravitate towards him as that leader. So leaders come in all kinds of shapes and sizes and, and personalities. And I think some are gregarious in volume, you know, and so on. And some can also be very quiet indeed by example and with, with the resiliency and excellence that you do. So just a quick synopsis of who Tor is and what this, what this means. So Tor, I think Mr. Tennis has got a, a presentation for you here, but we just want to say one more time around, applause.
On behalf of the Manitowoc Public School District, so I'd like to congratulate you on being a national merit scholar. As Mr. Hoffman pointed out, it's, it's quite an honor and we're very proud of you. And thanks for representing our district and Lincoln High School in such a positive manner.
Could you just, no, I don't, I break cameras. Just maybe. I like to take the picture, so that's, right there is good.
Here, this is your award.
There you go.
I'm gonna go one like that, and then I'm gonna go like that.
Awesome. Congratulations. Speaking of awards, I'd like to also just publicly recognize, I don't know if you recall, but last year, staff awards in terms of around our culture was called the cold coffee award. This year, we took a different spin on that, and it's the rising tide award. And the rising tide award honors staff nominated by their peers who lift others up and inspire our community to rise together. The recognition celebrates the power of colleagues lifting one another through positivity, support, and dedication. Winners are presented with a certificate, a gift basket, and a small token of appreciation for all of their hard work. And we are very excited to honor three recipients this month. We honored Kelly Phelps, who's a speech and langu- language pathologist at Monroe Elementary School, Kelly Spearing, who is an instructional aide at Washington Middle School, and Aaron Adi Meyer, who is a science teacher at Lincoln High School. So congratulations to them for their honors on the rising tide award. As you work through my report, you'll see I had a, quite a lengthy section this month on my learnings. Continuing to participate in the first year superintendent workshops that are provided by WASDA, which is our state organization for district administrators. I'll continue to include those links in there so you get to see all the exciting topics that I'm learning about. And if you ever run into one of those topics that you'd like to know more about, try to catch me sooner than later so I remember. Also, I did have the honor and privilege of attending the National Superintendent's Forum in Phoenix as I was asked to, to share and participate in leading and facilitating a roundtable discussion highlighting MPSD's school-to-work programming. And I titled the roundtable, "Growing Our Own Local Partnerships for Student Success and Workforce Development." So essentially, hosted that opportunity where superintendents from around the country were able to come in and facilitate a conversation about, what, what's really great about the format was not only did I get to share the great things that are happening here in Manitowoc, but it also spurred conversations about what's happening in workforce development in many, many other states. So it was a great opportunity for, for, for learning, and I'm very grateful to have had the opportunity. So thank you for allowing me to represent our district and our community in that way. I do want to touch on another issue in terms of legislative advocacy. We have spent, we, we just had our PAC meeting at CISA seven where we had an opportunity to meet with seven or eight different light, local legislators on some issues. You, you may have seen that I, I, I don't get involved on every issue, but on this particular issue, I felt a need to and, and called to do so. The issue is really around, essentially, it's a penalty, if you will, where it discourages retired educators from going back to work and helping us out amidst the shortage. So it's really about the retirement and annuity and not being able to draw that. And they can only work eight hundred and eighty hours without penalty. There are many states in our area as a result of, you know, the shortage happening that have decided to put that aside to allow people to work. I can tell you from experience that our district does, it directly affects our district. As principal of Lincoln High School, just a few years ago, we were short an English teacher. And one of the very best English teachers that I ever worked with in my career happened to be retired. And she did come back and help us out. But what was a shame is she couldn't help us out for the entire day. She could only teach a couple of classes. You know, the legislators quite frankly make some excuses about why this doesn't go through. It has been, it had, does have bipartisan support. And however, the, the ironic thing is, is it was removed from the committee prior to the committee meeting. So my letter on that is just to urge them to reconsider because these are very talented and experienced educators that all the districts in the state of Wisconsin deserve access to, to help our kids learn and grow. So if you feel so moved, you know, contacting your local, our local legislators about this issue can be helpful. So I appreciate if anybody would do that. We hosted some Spanish students from September second to fourteenth. MPSD families hosted students from Sagasta, our partner school, from Spain. The group of twenty-one students and two teachers had a wide variety of experiences during their visit. They attended classes at Lincoln, went to the Ryer West, or the Ryer Memorial School for us. By the way, almost universally, when I asked them what they enjoyed most, they like American football a whole lot. Couple of them got to go to the Badger game. They were excited about the ships game. They're doing cheers in the stands. So it was really exciting to get a chance to meet with them. And a special thanks to Lori for coordinating, but we hosted a luncheon with those students here at central office. And I was able to go in and have a conversation with them and learn a little bit about their culture. Our students from, from Manitowoc will visit them in Ju- late, you know, over summer as part of the exchange. And we've, we've had this relationship for quite some time with that school.
Do we get to get our kids into a ballgame?
We have to sign some waivers of liability, but. So there's also a section in, on here, which is very important, on the upcoming dates and timeline for our facilities advisory committee work, of course, that's been completed Wednesday, October twenty-second. Representatives from those committees, as well as Mr. Hacker, who facilitated, will be here to, to deliver a presentation. That presentation also, and the information from it, was shared via a staff, all staff video that I created and shared out with principals to share with their staff. We are also going to be creating a frequently asked questions document that will begin by sending out at the end of this week after all the staff members have the opportunity to view those recommendations as well. Coffee and conversation this month is on Friday twenty-fourth with me at the Manitowoc Coffee at nine AM in the back room there. We also had a, we also, as a district, were asked to participate in the UW Green Bay Chancellor's Dinner. And I do appreciate Mr. Trask and Mr. Hanson and Mr. Hoffman joining me for that special event. Essentially showcasing the Rising Phoenix program and the fact that it started in Manitowoc and the fact that we have had such strong success with that program, with our students both academically, and they're, they're doing a really great job as students. And the beautiful part about it is almost nearly every student goes on in their college experience. So they're not stopping at their associate's degrees. When they graduate Lincoln High School with their associates, they're, they're going on to continue their college education, which is the goal, one of the goals of that program. Thanks to all the members of our public relations team that meets monthly. In addition, Manitowoc is being featured on Wisconsin Public Radio's Morning Edition hosted by Alex Skro, which will feature an interview from myself highlighting the work of the district. The story focuses on how school districts across the state are implementing strategies to strengthen student culture and address enrollment issues. Seventy-three percent of districts in the state are in declining enrollment. Also began a meet with them quarterly, a meeting with the PTO, PTA representatives from the district. We had a very nice discussion about what's happening in those schools and in their programming. And I also shared with them the recommendations of the facilities advisory committee. We don't typically meet in November, but I promised them that we'll have a special meeting to also go over things as things become more specific after these initial general recommendations are made. And I'd be happy to take any questions anybody has. Questions?
I see them.
Awesome. I'd like to turn it over to Heidi Schroderis, who is going to begin our director's report. We have, I, I should preface, I mentioned this to all of you. We're having our principals come through and sharing their hundred-day plans with you in a brief presentation. So, Heidi.
We are very excited to have our principals joining us. We have Angie Pardoun from Monroe. I will let her introduce her team. They're going to share about their hundred-day plan and where they're at so far this year. Come on up, Angie, with your.
So I'm here with one of you.
One team, okay. Team of two today.
So I'm happy to walk through our hundred-day plan with you. This year, we, we now have a larger building leadership team that is comprised not only of administrators or people working within the office, but also with our staff as well. So if you take a look, Marissa Kluth, who is here. Tonight, she is our dean of students. Tara Brechner is our school counselor. Ruth Crowsey is our instructional coach. Vicki Hang is our EL teacher. Chelsea Meyer is one of our kindergarten teachers. Paul Delbo is a special ed teacher. Greg Kohler is our school psychologist. Sarah Lowenstek is a third grade teacher, and Season Hack is our reading specialist. So we have all of these people, and we meet once a month to, to go over our hundred-day plan and look at where we're at, but also looking at other building things that we need to discuss. I do.
Think the presenters.
Here we go. Here we go. Okay. So some of the data that, we got together this summer to do a data summit. And we looked at GLEES Web, which is the test that. at GLEES Web, which is the test that is given to all kindergarten through third grade students. One of the things that we noticed about that was that 86 students K3 had reading plans. And so when you look at that, that's a lot of students that are on a plan for reading. We also looked at our forward exam data. Within that forward exam data, we noticed that there were a lot of... There were significant gaps, achievement gaps, in our marginalized population. So economic status gap was, it went from 20.5% to 25% in our testing. Disability status gap went from 29% to 30%, and our English learner status gap went from 27.9% to 20.7%. So we looked at that, then we also dug into our access testing, which is the testing of our EL students, and we noticed that over time, our students were doing better. Like, we were having... So for the 24, 25, we only had 5% with low growth, but we had 40% and 55% that had typical growth or high growth. So we're looking at our EL population and what is happening. So our team was like, well, what is the EL teacher doing? So we were digging into that a little bit, so you can go to the next one. So our team actually, after looking at all of this data, they identified that the Reading Foundational Goal, our Reading Foundational Standard III was something that we wanted to work on throughout the whole school, because we wanted to make sure that our students really learned some of those skills with reading. So our goal is, in the first 100 days of the 25, 26 school year, 80% of students will know and apply grade level phonics and word analysis skills in decoding words as measured by Common Formative Assessments. And so what we do is we have weekly professional learning community meetings, we have the monthly building leadership team meeting, and we do a lot of data tracking in order to make sure that we are focused on the goal so that we can achieve that goal. So if you go to the next one. Our professional practice goal, which is related to our staff, our team decided that what we were going to do was we were going to focus on having staff unpack one standard, and one standard being our actual goal for our building. So what they've done is they've taken the foundational goal, the standard, and they have identified the learning targets and the success criteria, which are all the skills necessary to become proficient in that standard. So if you click on third grade, this is just an example. Every grade level, our building leadership team talked about this. So every grade level, we have our building goal up on top, and then the actual grade level standard. And then what they've done is they have identified what the learning target is, and then the skills related to that learning target, and then the data that they have compiled. So our building leadership team is looking at this data as K5. Our teams have created this, so then we can go back and look to see, how are we doing? Are we actually making progress? Are we not making progress? What do we need to do? And in our PLCs, that's pretty much what we're doing, is we're looking at data in order to drive the instruction that we have. Okay. So our teams are doing the professional practice goal. So if you go to the next one. We also identified a behavior goal. So during the first 100 days, teachers will teach and practice universal expectations in common areas and then utilize response protocol for chronic unexpected behaviors so that less than 20% of our student population has minor referrals. So here's things that we were doing. So if you look, we went over, our team had decided on like, what are the school-wide expectations? And we shared that with staff, and staff was instrumental in creating this as well. So we spent, and I'm going to jump to the bottom, we spent the entire month of September teaching and reteaching the expectations. We go over these time and again because we know that with routine and with practice, students are going to demonstrate appropriate behaviors. And so Marissa did a wonderful job of identifying as well, like, expected and unexpected behaviors. These are things that we actually talked with kids about. So expected behaviors being, this is what we want to see. This is what we want to see in the lunchroom. This is what we want to see in the classroom. Unexpected behaviors would be those things that we do not want to see. So we actually explicitly taught that so that the kids, there's no questions. So, and then the Character Strong, the district has adopted the Character Strong curriculum, and it has been wonderful as our counselor is helping our teachers lead these lessons. The month of September was kindness, and so there was a lot of lessons related around kindness and different things, noticing kindness that the kids were doing. And then they'd go up on a bulletin board, and the counselor had an assembly, we had an assembly at the end of the month, and Lee came to talk to our kids. So we focused on that. Now we're on to respect, but also within there, we're talking about bullying and what that is, what it looks like, and some of those things. And actually, as a matter of fact, like, less than 5% of our students currently right now are receiving support. So. So additional information, things that we are doing at school. So we have an instructional coach that is actually doing coaching cycles with three of our grade level teams and one specials teacher. We also... So I attend PLC meetings, and so we focus on standards, learning targets, success criteria, making sure that like, that the teachers and the kids know what it is that we're doing in terms of teaching and learning. And then we're also looking at student data, which drives our instructions, and we're digging a lot deeper into data. And so it's wonderful to have conversations with like, fifth grade teachers about division and how like, we need to dig deeper into how we're teaching it, and there's different strategies to be able to use, and where are some of the kids struggling? So we're doing that, and I try to provide them with some very specific feedback related to like, the strengths that they are doing, and then potential areas of growth, like where we could go further. Our building leadership team is looking at data and providing support. Our counselor and our dean are supporting students' depth with observations, strategies, recorded conversations. Our counselor and our dean get into classrooms to observe not just student behavior, but also like, some of the practices and the routines, to be able to provide some suggestions related to that. And we are also utilizing our EL teacher, who had a significant amount of growth around the students that she services. So she's providing some professional development once per quarter to our staff. That's what we're doing at Monroe.
Can we clap?
Yeah.
Questions, sir? No? Okay. Next, I have the privilege of introducing our Wilson team. So Principal Anna Beatty, Assistant Principal Amanda Pacala, and Reading Specialist, I think is joining, maybe Julianne?
She's our cheerleader.
Yeah. Here for moral support.
Thank you.
Julianne, reading teacher.
Yeah.
Reading interventionist, rather. My apologies.
Sure.
Wilson.
Okay.
You can if you want to. We're passing around our PLC checkbook, which is a resource that we gave to all of our staff. We'll reference that at some point in our presentation today. So I'm Anna Beatty.
Principal?
This is Amanda Pacala. So thank you for having us here tonight. We're going to take you through our 100-day plan. If you want to clap. All right. So we're going to start by diving into the data sets that we used to create our 100-day plan. We used the Forward Exam, the Fast Bridge Assessment, along with a school-wide baseline assessment, and our infinite campus behavior referrals. Tonight, we're going to take you through some of the highlights from that data set along with our goals, and then share our plans and supports that we have in place. On the next slide, we just included for you some of our student demographics from both last year and this year, because we have data in this slideshow from both groups of students. We wanted to kind of give you a preview. The Forward would reflect last year's students and this year's seventh and eighth graders, and then the Fast Bridge from this fall is our current population. So you'll see scores from both. All right. This first slide is a data set that highlights our ELA data from our Forward Exam from spring, along with our ELA Fast Bridge. When you look at this, our same group of students would be our sixth graders from spring, which are now seventh graders in the Fast Bridge, and then our spring seventh graders are now our, obviously, our current eighth graders. And when you look at those data sets, you're going to notice that those scores are very a very close comparison. So we can see that there's a correlation between the Forward and Fast Bridge in regards to the ELA data. This slideshow goes over math and the comparison of the math Forward and the Fast Bridge scores from this fall. When our teams analyze these data sets, we identify two groups of students that were struggling. Those groups of students were students of disabilities and are EL learners. Those achievement gaps you're going to see with those two groups across all subject areas, so those are going to be a targeted group for our goals and our work with students this year as well. All right. One of the things that we wanted to highlight in our data sets as we analyzed our data was our work that we did last year. So last year, our collaborative efforts amongst all of our staff, regardless of the content that they taught, was they were focusing in on our Reading Standard I, which focuses in on creating a claim, providing textual evidence to support that, and then making inferences. So what you can see is when we've, when we combined our efforts as a staff, you're going to notice that our sixth graders to seventh graders from 24 to 25 grew from 29.4% being proficient to 41.5% being proficient, and our seventh to eighth graders from the 24 to 25 Forward went from 28.4% to 77.2% proficient within that standard. So you can see that our collaborative efforts, when we hone in all of our efforts to target student growth, really does have a huge impact. So that's what we're doing again this year. Amanda will share that.
So the academic goal for 100-day plan is, by the end of 100 school days, 95% of students in grades six through eight will demonstrate increased proficiency in making those logical inferences, identifying implicit information within the text as measured by our school development benchmark assessment, and increasing their Fast Bridge score by five points. So we're looking at the two data measures there. And so action steps, you know, creating that baseline assessment, which we've done in the rubric for those grade levels, putting that stuff on a data wall, giving that assessment, going over the data together with the team, analyzing those findings, and sharing that out, making sure we have our targeted skills, sharing that with content PLCs to create Common Formative Assessments that are aligned to that so we can target growth for students, administering those formative assessments, and then again, analyzing data so we can see where we're going and continue our progress.
From those student analysis, when it comes to those formative assessments, teams are then creating plans for their instruction. So we'll dive into that a little bit in their professional practice goal, which is up here now. So these, both of these goals kind of go hand in hand with each other. So the professional practice goal for our staff is, by the end of 100 days, given training and coaching, PLC teams will use formative and summative assessment data to ensure learning for all students through their Tier One and Tier Two instructional practices as measured by our PLC Strategies Implementation Guide and Pathways Tool. That's a whole multiple there. One of the things that we want to make sure that you have a clear understanding of is the difference between formative and summative assessments. So formative assessments, when we think about your state standard, a state standard is then broken up into some subskills and content. And a formative assessment will take, is like, a smaller assessment, a smaller assessment to see the consistent growth over the course of a unit versus a summative assessment will assess the overall growth within a unit. So think of it as, here's our overarching standard, our formative is going to assess progress throughout the unit, and then the summative is like, your final assessment. All right. In regards to helping our teams, we have PLC professional development during our in-service week at the very beginning of the school year. We provided a variety of resources to provide clarity for teams. One of those resources is in your hands right now, which is the PLC playbook that we have put together for our staff. Within there, you're going to notice the Strategies Implementation Guide, or that SIG that we mentioned. That's on page four, and you'll see that it's a rubric to guide our teams' work and help them progress as a professional learning community. We also provided a Pathways Tool for teams, and that starts on page six, so a couple pages after. This is really a breakdown of those PLC anchor statements, like those non-negotiables that every single team should live by. And it breaks it down to provide questions for teams that they can ask to guide their work. So let's say they're struggling with an aspect of the PLC process, they can go to those tools and look at that one area and see what is it that they're really hung up on to help move that team forward. In addition, our PLC teams then obviously are planning for those Common Formative and Summative Assessments while unwrapping standards. They analyze data frequently and use that data then to determine their next steps for instruction. That might mean that they're going to do reteaching as a whole large group depending on data sets. It might mean that they're going to pull small groups of students to work with them during our intervention and enrichment time that we have built into our middle school day. In addition, our admin are giving teams feedback around their PLCs using that SIG. And at the middle school level, what we did is, and an administrator is assigned to each PLC team, so that we are there to support their work, and we meet with them once a week. And then when it comes to our elective teachers, because we share some of our electives between both buildings, we've actually divided and conquered. So Laney and Dana, along with the two of us, are actually meeting with all of our elective teachers as well. So each team has one of their administrators working with them as well. We also have a behavior goal, but I want to share the behavior data that went into making the decisions for our behavior goal. So through a deep dive into some behavior analysis, we identified that a chunk, a big chunk of our behaviors were from disruptive and disorderly type behaviors. And so those are our biggest areas of concern, and as those, basically, those types of behaviors disrupt learning in the learning environment. So those are a big flag for us. On the next slide, it shows a breakdown of our in-school suspension and out-of-school suspensions. We did not just look at each grade level or school-wide data, we also looked at the breakdown in regards to how did our number of ISSs and OSSs compare for students with disabilities versus without disabilities, our male and female students, along with students of color. Some things that came out of that analysis is that we have a high number of suspensions with students with disabilities, along with students of color. And I think the thing for us always to remember is, when we have suspensions, it always impacts student learning. It negatively impacts those students because they're out of the classroom and they're not receiving the same type of instruction that they would if they were in the classroom. So that's partially why we're really honing in on that for our behavior goal. Go ahead, Lori.
So the goal is, by the end of 100 school days, given training and coaching, 100% of staff will consistently implement classroom expectations and strategies to address disruptive classroom behaviors according to the school-wide multi-level systems of supports as measured by a decrease... by a decrease in office referrals. And so some action step highlights that we are working to meet the goal are reviewing our work hard way and our code of conduct, reviewing the tiered response system for common behaviors. We have provided staff with a quick reference guide in regard to those. We have continued professional development, including proactive classroom management, consistent response protocols, and practice through role-playing with the staff, de-escalation strategies. We also have weekly behavior check-ins with house teams. So every Friday, our house teams meet, and weekly, we meet with admin and counseling to help support students. We give peer feedback through learning walks, and we also have the student intervention team that meets to help catch any students that might need some extra support. Additional proactive efforts, each of our team PLC teams, as I had mentioned before, has an administrator assigned to them. In addition to that, our PLC teams have our instructional coach working with them and partnering up. She's also doing some co-teaching. Along with PLC teams have specialists assigned to them as their go-to person when it comes to thinking about how can we modify our units or our lessons and/or tests so that we can best meet the students' needs, especially thinking about our students who have disabilities and our EL students. In addition, we talked about our training, our ongoing training for PLCs, those resources that we provided, professional development during our staff meetings that we've mentioned, and then we also have distributive leadership going on through our building within our teams. So we have a leadership team that meets approximately probably every month and a half to talk over our progress as a whole regarding our 100-day plans. They have our building intervention team, which Amanda had mentioned, that meets weekly to really support our students who are struggling. Our tier-one best practices team is honing in on what are strategies that we can implement right into our general ed classrooms to support students receiving EL services and/or our students with disabilities? So what are some high-impact strategies that will help them in the Jeddah classrooms beyond what they're getting with their specialized instruction? In addition, we have a culture team focusing on creating a positive culture within our staff at Wilson. Our behavior team, which is targeting that work around our behavior goal, our celebrations team really hones in on celebrating our students' successes. So every month, we have a monthly assembly where we celebrate student success and come together for a positive celebration. In addition, we have common efforts around using high-impact instructional practices and common language. So last year, as you can tell from our data, those efforts to create common language amongst staff and the strategies that we're using actually has a positive impact. And then we also have homework help days on Tuesdays and Thursdays after school, and we have a behavior detention on Monday where we give specific individualized interventions for our children who are struggling either behaviorally and/or with attendance. So, any questions?
Questions?
Just a comment, I think Heidi came to us summer talking about, and Katie, about upping our PLC game. And tonight was evidence from both of our buildings presented that our administrators and our leadership team are really rolling their sleeves up on this. So it's going to be exciting to see in 100 days some of the evidence of that really paying off. Appreciate it, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wilson.
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, this is awesome. Madison Wilson, absolutely great presentation, thank you very much. Now, so at the elementary level, is there a crossover between Madison, Monroe, and Stengel and Rivers? The crossover plans equal, and the same thing with you guys? Are you in Washington and consort over these kind of things? Is there a collaborative plan, you're collecting the same data? Same at the elementary, or are you pretty much independent?
Every building may have chosen like a different, based on their data, what their data is telling them. However, we are all using the same structure.
Same percentages and same, okay.
So we're tackling the PLCs the same, we're giving, we're using the SIG, we're trying to provide.
Excellent, thanks you guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Lee?
So thank you very much for coming and sharing this, and I think you'll see reports from the rest of the buildings, and I think it's really important that we connect the work we're doing from our strategic vision and that you're seeing us present to you within our committees of our 100-day plans. What we're really hoping is that you see the fruits of that labor really happening in each of our schools with the leadership that's happening there. And I really want to thank, you know, in this particular case, Heidi and Katie for their work with the administrators at each level, both elementary and secondary, and our principals doing the hard work in the trenches, and quite frankly, all of our staff who are working very hard to hone in their skills and be reflective and be vulnerable about the data they're looking at and really doing it in the name of helping kids learn at higher levels. So kudos to everyone, I'm so impressed with the things I'm seeing around the district around, you know, moving in a direction where all kids can learn at high levels.
Thank you.
All right, new business, or unfinished business?
It's unfinished business.
So we're going to new business, personal policy, Carrie.
Yeah, let me just.
Got you.
We had, we had two, two, two issues. God, I can't find it. We had one in which Stacy was, Stacy was, Stacy was cleaning up the, the manual, the what?
Handbook.
The handbook. The handbook, yeah. And they were, they were, you know, she had done, she had already done a fairly comprehensive editorial job on that before, but then looked back and discovered that she, oh, she hadn't included this and hadn't included that. So there was mostly an effort to make everything real inclusive in terms of staff, staff categories. You got, you got this stuff. I don't know why I can't find it. And this, and so we need to, we need to have a motion, the committee made the motion to approve this, the amendments, the editorial changes, that Stacy had submitted to the committee and has been submitted to the board, and that the board, the board accept and approve those.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from David, and these were all kind of boilerplate things that she had just forgot to include in the manual, so we haven't done yet. So we have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing seen none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, and that is passed.
Okay. The second, the second issue was that there have been two families that have moved into the, into the district with, each with a student who requires a one-on-one para assistance. We don't have, we don't have enough paraprofessionals to fulfill those needs. So the motion is to add two professional, professional staff, paraprofessional staff people in order to accommodate the needs of these two specific students. So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abel. Any other discussion on adding the pairs for the additional special ed students that we have? Hearing seen none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, and that passes. Anything else from policy personnel, Mr. Trask?
No, nothing else.
Then we'll move on to finance, facilities and finance, Mr. Shaw.
We have, we don't have to approve the budget information because that was just, that was just pretty much information. We already did that in our, in our earlier meeting. So we approved the preliminary, correct? You don't want another motion on that?
Yeah, we're looking to, for a motion to approve the budget that was presented tonight.
Oh, you do, okay. So yes, came out of committee to approve the motion that was, to make a motion and approve it. We proposed budget submitted by the business department. So we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion to approve the budget that was presented to you tonight.
So move.
Mr. Abel, with the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Bowman with a second. Discussion.
Point of information?
Yes.
Should we assume then that we'll be getting an amended one to approve?
Yes.
We get the final numbers?
Yeah.
I assume this is a placeholder as our current best guess as we fine-tune, get closer to the vote.
Got it.
Thank you, sir.
And this is a roll call vote.
It's a roll call vote. Any other discussion before we roll call? All right, let's go ahead with the roll call.
Christopher Abel?
Aye.
David Bowman?
Aye.
Viv Hanson?
Aye.
Ann Holson?
Aye.
Mary Lofe Bonnick?
Aye.
Keith Shaw?
Aye.
Gary Trask?
Aye.
Which emotion passes seven zip? Any other discussion on budget? No. That brings us to the voucher impact information on tax bill.
Thank you. Came out of the finance facilities committee, gave a motion to bring to the board, motion two to one out of committee. The resolution would allow a tax bill to be reflect dollar amount that school vouchers cost taxpayers, providing additional transparency, helping the taxpayers understand the full impact of the bill. This is patterned after a number of districts can facilitate transparency in having, having the community understand exactly what impact that 18.9% have from the vouchers on their tax bill. So that came out of committee. It was presented to the board by Mr. Abel. Mr. Abel did the work on the resolution, which is, which we all have, and you have received a copy of what that might look like. So it did come to the committee, and like I said, a vote of two to one, now brought to the full board, taking the motion to accept the resolution that would allow the tax bill to reflect the dollar amount that school vouchers would cost the taxpayer to be fully impacted and stated on their tax bill.
I have a motion, not a second. Mr. Abel with a second, and I will give you just a minute and a half to read over the handout that we gave you, basically is what we talked about at committee meeting. Chris, you have any comments?
Yeah, just to clarify for everybody, first of all, it was super long before, and it was way too long. And that was because I put in everything that every other municipality had used, and I thought, or every other district, excuse me, had used, and I thought, well, you know, if you're going to let me cut it down, I'm going to really cut it down because I think they get too long. And, and on this document, what I want you to understand is two things. One is, the big green arrow shows you what would be added. And the second is, the reason this is not a document on our normal system is because while I did get this off the internets, I am not confident that somebody could unredact what's covered here, and I don't want to dox anybody. I'm not, I'm not trying to deny anybody the information, I just wanted you to be able to see it, but we, we don't want to accidentally leak somebody's information that doesn't want it out.
Yeah, that's good.
Just so you understand why that went that way.
Other discussion, Anne.
You have to motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, thank you.
Just wondering if we can put the percentage of our budget, because we just got that tonight from, from Nathan, 18.9% of the levy. So 18.9% of the levy is going to pop into somebody's head.
Yeah.
The 20, almost 20% is not going to PSD.
Could we make that a friendly amendment?
A friendly amendment to put that percentage on this.
Sure, absolutely, I'll accept that amendment.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I agree, that's, that's like a trigger, number, people are going to remember that rather than a, an abstract million-dollar figure.
Yeah.
I'll go, accept that amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that since, since it says, include on their property tax bills, the portion of the school district levy attributed to capturing state aid.
Yeah.
That would mean we can express it as a percentage, there's no, there's no reason why we can't.
We could even do it as both.
I would commend both.
Which this year is.
20%, yes.
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? We have that amendment, which is friendly, so we don't have to vote on that. Any other discussion on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, and it passes.
I have another motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Abel has been extremely involved in this, not only at the local level, but also investigating many, many districts at the state level who are going after the same transparency information to their districts. So I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Abel represent the Manitowoc Public School District Board of Education when speaking to the city council as a representative of our board.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second from Secretary, Secretary Professor, Mr. Carey?
Secretary what? City board for a second. No, to the city board, not to the county board.
Do you have a motion or can, can Mr. Hanson just appoint?
Like me?
Just for point of discussion, do we really need to?
I don't know if we can just appoint them.
Just appoint somebody.
It's a good idea.
If you're clear about a vote, we can.
You are correct, you could do it either way. He could simply appoint it.
Not comfortable, but just to make sure we cover all bases.
But if somebody's uncomfortable with it, they should be free to say so.
Just to cover the bases, let's vote on it. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say nay?
Will you ask him for the big green arrow too?
I abstained because that seemed tacky.
I noticed that you did add "and" surrounding communities, or not surrounding, it wasn't just.
Well, well, that's, that's been the standard language.
Okay.
We're not going to go talk to those communities, but normally, if you're asking for transparency, you'd ask for everybody if they want to do it, if they find it super easy. The goal is to get as many of the people that are affected by the levy, the information, and the shortest route to that is to go to the city council.
They have final say, I mean, city council votes it down, it doesn't happen.
And thank you all for your trust in me on this, I will get in touch with the mayor tomorrow to find out procedurally how he'd like me to take the next step. That's it, Mr. Chair?
That's it. I don't believe there was anything that came out of curriculum that wasn't in the minutes, so we're covered there. You know what happened there. Remarks, just a couple things, and I wish you would have stuck around, but I want you to know that Principal Hoffman had a cross-country meet last weekend. One of the schools had a young man with Down syndrome who was running in the race, he had never finished a race. And, but the coach had him participate, which was great, and I, my understanding is there was a roll card that would go next to him and encourage him on the race. But three-quarters of a mile before the end, he was quitting. And our principal went out and ran with him and encouraged him to finish the race.
Oh, cool.
Mom was quite emotional at the end, and it was very cool. That, that's kind of what Lincoln has become, a place that honors everybody. Lee did a great job with his speech at UWGB. Aaron Rill is excited about Manitowoc and what we're doing with Rising Phoenix. So that's, that's a good thing. Finally, I'm going to try to do this quick, but one of the things I said early in this endeavor this year was, we're going to set the record straight when things come out that aren't said correctly about the school district. And there was a posting that somebody sent to me on a social media site that might be close to us in many ways by the person who posted it, but it had six things that talked about how much money the school district is wasting. And I just want to comment on that because it is okay to have opinions that differ from other people. That is fine, that is what this country is, we have freedom of speech, we can disagree. But at some point, you have to be able to say, this is a fact. And I just wanted to give And I just wanted to give information from the school board and the school district that agrees with what was posted on that website. And the first one was, the school district hires psychologists. We do hire psychologists, but if we don't have psychologists, we don't have special education classes. Our psychologists look at kids, evaluate kids, and help us get them in the right programs. And this is very personal to me. My daughter went through a grade school that loved her and fought to keep her in regular school when they were going to transfer her. She went to a middle school that helped her through middle school years. And then went to a high school where she learned how to sing and have fun and become part of that school and was able to walk down the stairs at graduation, just like her brother and sister and her mom and dad. And that's because we have psychologists that get kids in classes. So if we spend money on psychologists, we're not wasting any taxpayer money. Second one, we tried, twice attempted to give ourselves money to get paid. Yes, we did talk about that, I believe in the last, last session of the board. And we never did that, so we never spent any money on wages for the school board. That's an untruth, never happened. Or voted to delay the building updates. I think you remember that last year when we got referendum numbers, maybe two years ago, a year and a half ago, we got numbers and they were going to start this whole plan to redo all the schools to save us a million dollars a year because we were going to close our closing schools. We saved a million dollars a year without closing a school because the new superintendent and his staff went through and found ways to save, found staff that was no longer needed in certain areas and saved one, one million-plus dollars. Saved it without closing a school, and more importantly, gave the community a chance for public input on the project. And that'll be reported to us coming up. So we don't waste any money putting that project off. In fact, we passed a referendum that was pretty successful in its passage to start repairing some of the schools that we needed to repair. We voted to close Central Office, yes, we did. But we never said we were going to save a million dollars by closing Central Office. All right? There might have been savings there, there still might be when we start looking at buildings and the projects that are coming up. Who knows what's going to happen? But we never, when not closing this building, saved a million dollars. We had never talked about that. 4.4 million overstaffing and too many Lincoln High School secretaries. All right? As I said before, we've saved a million dollars in this process that we're going through to look at our buildings, to redo it. The, going through the staff, if there are extra secretaries at Lincoln High School, I'm sure those positions were all looked at when we started saving money by going through, what do we actually? I trust the people leading this district, our administration, and the people working here that they've done that. And finally, this one, there is a little truth to it, that it costs us $200,000 in the food program. You don't get reimbursed 100%. However, as Nate told us tonight, your reimbursement comes back by the number of kids who are part of your program. The more kids you have, the more you get reimbursed, and it's, it lessens that amount that you're spending out of the taxpayers' pockets. If you remember, a couple of years ago, our program was stopped. And the people in the community raised their voices and said, we want that back. And when that came back, more kids participated. We're still way behind because of that stoppage, we're behind because we stopped the breakfast program in some schools because there wasn't time to do it or places to do it. And you can make a judgment and you can have an opinion if it's right or wrong to feed kids. But I think what we saw from the community when that was stopped, the community said no. One thing we're going to do here in the Manitowoc Public School District is make sure that every kid gets a meal and doesn't go home hungry. To add to that story, I had a gentleman from Manitowoc tell me at the homecoming game that his wife used to come home from her grade school position at one of our grade schools hungry every day after school. And he couldn't figure out why she was hungry when she came home, and that's because the teacher was giving her lunch to a young man that needed it. So we have good people here, we're feeding kids that need it, and if we can get that participation up, it'll close that gap. So I will continue to watch for misstatements and things that are said against this district because it's a pretty good place to send your kids. We've got good staff and good people working here, and we're getting better every day. I think we've seen some of that tonight. All right, that's my remarks, sorry I rambled a little bit. Future meeting dates, October 21st is the Wasbe meeting, correct? That starts at four, if you want to go to the workshop?
Yep.
In Keel?
Yep.
Yeah, November 21st, next week, 21st, next week's date, right? Ride sharing, anybody's going?
I'm going. And then it's the 22nd?
The 22nd is a special board meeting for the.
Buildings.
Buildings, yes.
And perhaps a refined budget. On levy setting?
Yeah.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn? That was quick. That's great, I love it.
What's going on tonight?
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you, thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.